Okay, welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Reorganization Meeting, January 7th, 2016. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ligally, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. We now have to administer the oath of office to all newly appointed members to the board, and those members are: Seat number one, Mayor Frank Delkor; Seat number two, Robert Wagner Jr.; Seat number three, Deputy Mayor Carl Sarachi; Seat number four, Robert Peason; Seat number eight, Sean Lapany; Seat number nine, Kenneth Hestag; Seat alternate want number one, Sally Becarina; Seat alternate number two, Stephanie Forrest. If you all could stand, raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stephanie Forrest.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And to the governments
And to the governments.
Established in the United States
Established in the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly
And justly.
Perform all duties
Perform all duties.
Of the Office of Planning Board
Of the Office of Planning Board.
Very important. Say your seat.
Seat number one.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You are now officially Planning Board Members of 2016. Lucille, can we get a roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Peason.
Here.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Dr. Maruli.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Lapany.
Here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Ms. Becarina.
Here.
Ms. Forrest.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Here.
And Mayor Delkor.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open up nominations for Chairman of the 2016 Planning Board.
I guess, Mr. Burchett, I'd like to nominate Sean Lapany for Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Lapany, are you okay with that?
Uh, thankfully, and, uh, yes, I am.
Any other nominations?
Move nominations to be closed.
Second.
I've heard, now that I've heard the nominations to be closed, I'd like to, uh, have a roll call for the nomination of Sean Lapany to be Planning Board Chairman for 2016.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Lapany.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Mr. Lapany, you are now the Chairman.
Thank you all. You can't my chair now, worse.
No, you go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, it's now your meeting, and I'm happy to say, after 15 years, I am leaving.
Thank you for your service.
Here's your sign.
Oh, I have a sign, too. Thank you very much.
Have a good meeting, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Well, I'd like first to thank the boards for their gracious, uh, confidence in me, and will try to withhold the seat with the dignity that the former chairmans have held. Especially, I'd like to thank Dr. Sarici for his tenure on this board. He's moved on to another board, and his guidance was, uh, well-respected by the, uh, the board members, and me in particular, and I'll try and do the best I can to keep up the work that he, uh, and this board has, uh, been charged. So I guess, uh, for the next Board of Business, we need to elect a Vice Chair. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'd like to hear any nominations for such.
Uh, first of all, Mr. Chairman, congratulations. For Vice Chair, I'd like to nominate Dr. Dan Maruli.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination of Dr. Dan Maruli, a second. Is there any other nominations?
Move nominations to be closed.
Uh, nominations are moved to be closed.
Second.
Nomination's closed. Since we have a, uh, Dr. Dan Maruli has a Vice Chair nomination, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Dr. Maruli.
Hmm, okay, yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Maruli. Then, I believe we have, the next one would be for Secretary. Is that correct? David? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any nominations for Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Julian for Secretary.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, uh, nomination? Okay, movement for closing nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a vote on Dan Maruli, no, sorry, Neil, as, uh, Secretary.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman, Dr. Maruli, Chairman Lapany.
I'm not a doctor.
It'll take some getting used to, we understand.
You only have three months to get that.
Yes, sorry. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a resolution ratifying fair and open selection process. Which is...
Basically what it is, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution of the board confirming the actions of the committee accepting the fair and open selection process applications for the positions of Planning Board Attorney, Planning Board Engineer, and Planning Board Alternate Engineer.
Okay. Do we do that by an affirmation, or do we do...
Motion, a second.
And we have a motion? Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
And Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes. And the next Board of Business is the appointment of our Board Attorney, which is Mr. Eric M. Bernstein and Associates, LLC. The information is in your packet. Any motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Next is the appoint... You're welcome. Thank you. Next is the appointment of our Board Engineer, which would be William White and Mazur Consulting. Is that correct? The information is in your packet. Any nominations or comment?
I will move that motion, Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Deputy, Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Lapany.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be the appointment of Alternate Board Engineer, which in your packet would be, uh, Carol Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, there were, there were three proposals submitted for Alternate Board of Engineers, Carol.
Okay.
CME Associates.
CME, correct.
And Hatchmont McDonald.
Hatchmont McDonald, so the three.
Correct me, Mr. Bernstein, but you could either have one, or all three, or two, or whoever the board chooses to go with it.
Okay, any discussion?
As far as is Carol, number one, and going down after, after the conflict, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so you would do Carol Engineering first, then followed by CME?
Correct.
And then, false, last one was, I'm sorry, what was that, David?
Hatchmont McDonald.
Hatchmont McDonald. Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Ms. Forrest. Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Last is the appointment of our Court Reporter. We have a nomination. In our packet, I believe, is...
I will move the motion to move forward, Ms. Lucille here, our longtime and very supportive Court Reporter.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Peason.
Definitely, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapany.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your service. Last, next to last is our penultimate, is our videographer, which is Kaz from, and I forget the name.
Premier Media.
Premier Media, sorry. I apologize, and it's on, he's on camera, he probably just cut me out right there. Any, uh, conversation or other nominations? Seeing none? Okay, second? I'll second that. Since I messed up his name, I feel obligated. And roll call.
Yes, Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Okay, we also have an appointment of the Master Plan Subcommittee. Does that, uh, we need to make any changes from the existing, or we can keep the same?
Yeah. Actually, we actually can't keep it the same because three of the four members are no longer on the board.
Well, that would make sense, that.
The members of the board, the Class of Plan Subcommittee for the Board's edification last year were Mr. Burchett, Dr. Sarisi, Mr. Mertinger, and Mr. Wagner.
So, Mr. Wagner would be the only remaining. What did you do? Do we have any other nominees to fill those?
The alternate member was, was, was Mr. Delkor in his other capacity.
Yes, and I'll stay in that. If, uh, provided they're, uh, they're, they're willing to, I would, uh, I would certainly nominate Chairman Lapany and Vice Chairman Maruli to join Mr. Wagner, um, and, uh, so four.
That would be four, if you must, if you want to stay on, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, that would be fine, yes.
So move that motion.
So we have a nomination, and a second for myself, Dr. Maruli, Mr. Wagner, and...
The mayor is the alternate.
And the mayor is the alternate, okay, so those four.
You want a fourth, there were four last year.
There were four alternates when you...
When you want more?
Rob?
Sure.
Okay. Rob. I don't think they met at all last year, so it wasn't like a, it's a finding, a lot of time.
Will this make, will this make, will the second or amend their motion to allow for Mr. Peason to be added?
Okay. You have a motion by Mr. Connor?
I made the second.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay. Lucille?
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Last, next we have rules of order. Should that be read? Eric?
Just for the purposes of the record, the, the rules of order are essentially the same. The board will meet at 7:30 on the first and second Tuesdays of each month. No new business after 10:00, no meeting after 10:30 unless agreed to by a majority of the members present. The chair has the right to hold special meetings, the officers elected, and the roll call adds to the list. I would also point out to the board that we do have business meetings, um, on the fourth Thursday of the month, when determined by the board. Motion to approve.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You got that? Lucille?
Thank you. Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Next is a resolution designating the official newspaper. It's in your packet. We have, uh, recognized two newspapers as the most logical, the Curry News and the Hillsborough Beacon. I feel that the, uh, come, that the board's pleasure that the Hillsborough Beacon has the, be designated as and passed as the official newspaper of the Planning Board.
So moved.
Second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Next would be the resolution setting schedule of meetings. Which would, uh, in your packet there? Motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, um, resolution that was missed that was fixing charge for the notice of the meetings.
Uh, sorry, skipped over that. I'll go back to that, apologize. Resolution for fixing charge and notice of the meetings? Actually, I put those backwards in my packet here, and that's probably why I missed it, so my apologies. That information is also in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Getting close. Need a break? Resolutions for, of the open meeting policy, again, is in your packet.
I'll move this resolution. Second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapany.
Yes. Uh, next last, we have, the last one of the reorg would be administrative procedures, which is in your packet, packet, excuse me?
So moved.
I'll second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Becarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapany.
Yes. This concludes the administrative portion of our reorg meeting. I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it will be adjourned till 7:30. It's a call to order of the January 7th Township of Hillsborough Planning Board. Please, uh, pledge allegiance.
Ligally, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice as a Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason.
Here.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Ms. Becarina.
Here.
Ms. Forrest.
Here.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Here.
Mayor Delkor.
Really is not disposition minutes, Mr. Chairman. What you have is a memorialization resolution on the Peason properties filed number fifteen PB oh five MS RV. The eligible members to vote are yourself, Mr. Peason, Mr. Julian, Mr. Wagner, and the mayor.
Okay.
I'll move the resolution.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Delcora?
Yes.
Chairman LaFatte.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so the next position would be Planning Board Business Disposition of Resolution. We just did that, correct?
You gotta do the resolution.
Resolution?
The professionals.
Of the professionals?
Can be done by one motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. A motion to approve all the contracts of the Board Attorney, Board Engineer, Board of Health and Engineers, Board Corporator, and the Board Videoographer.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeCerenne?
Yes.
Mr. Faris?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcora?
Yes.
And Chairman LaFatte.
Yes. In your packet, you should have the two thousand fifteen Planning Board Annual Report that's been presented in your packet. Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I think on the last page, the meeting dates, the June fourth meeting on the attendance sheet shows two thousand eleven, should read two thousand fifteen.
You're correct. You get bonus points for reading?
Yes.
That's why it was like...
That's it?
I was studying.
You were studying. Any other discussion on the report? Make a motion to approve based on the changing of that meeting to the proper year of two thousand fifteen?
I will move the resolution as corrected.
Second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcora?
Yes.
Chairman LaFatte.
Yes. Next is a application from Glenn Gary, file number fifteen PB oh four MR for an extension of time granted through February twenty-nine of sixteen. Is that with or without notice?
Without notice.
Without notice. Motion to approve or discussion? How long has they, have they been moving this? When was the last time they had to provide notice?
It's been a while, Mr. Chairman. There've been ongoing discussions relative to the application. Mr. Mora and I have had one within the last couple of weeks, and I believe I'm gonna probably be having another one with him shortly.
Would it make sense to then, no act there to provide or require notice? Has it been outside that note, that range?
I think we're gonna figure out what they're gonna be submitting, whether they're gonna be submitting the old plan or a revised one similar, but they probably will... What we're doing for the purposes of this, of this one is an extension of time. We'll have to deal with the notice. I believe my recollection is we advised them, because I think they're coming in with a new application. They're gonna have to notice.
They're gonna notice anyway.
I'll move the extension.
Second.
Lucille?
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcora?
Yes.
Chairman LaFatte.
Yes. Special Committee reports? Okay. Business from the floor, not relating to today's agenda. Seeing none. Consideration of ordinances, today's public hearing subdivision site plan application titled Planet Earth Biodiesel, file number fifteen PB seventeen MRV, block one forty-three, lot eleven dot oh one, three oh one Royce Field Road. Applicant seeking minor subdivision approval and C-bulk variance for relief from minimum lot area. Proposed lot eleven dot oh four, minimum lot width at set pack, lot eleven dot oh one, and proposed lot eleven dot oh four. Minimum rear yard setback eleven dot oh one, minimum side yard setback lot eleven dot oh one. Maximum impervious coverage eleven dot oh one. To subdivide four acres into two lots, lot eleven dot oh one at two point zero six acres, and proposed lot eleven dot oh four at one point nine four acres. On a property located in the I-two light industrial zoning district, EC review twelve fourteen fifteen. So you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Singer.
Mr. Singer. Welcome, welcome to starting the year off talking into, into the microphone, either that one or you can...
Yeah, I've never been accused of no one being able to hear me.
Well, apparently, apparently...
It's for the tape, not for...
The videographer is accusing you. You could sit. It's okay.
Please make yourself comfortable.
Thank you. Name is David Singer from the law firm Ravella Singer Martinez, and I'm representing Planet Earth for this application. With me, we have our engineer and planner, Mr. Wayne Ingram from Engineering and Land Planning Association. To...
Would you like to have him sworn in?
Have him sworn in.
Okay, Lucille?
Yes, raise your hand please, sir. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. State your full name, spelling your last name.
Wayne Ingram, I-N-G.
Mr. Ingram, pick a, pick a mic.
I-N-G-R-A-M.
Would you like to have your, your witness give us his credentials, please, for the record?
I'm a licensed engineer, surveyor, and planner in the state of New Jersey. Degrees from Rutgers University and NGIT. I've been practicing in land use for over twelve years and have appeared before at least fifty boards over that time.
Thank you. We'll accept those qualifications. Proceed, Mr. Singer.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to have Mr. Ingram describe the subdivision plan for the board.
Sure. And I'll just draw your attention to exhibit we marked A-one. Essentially, the subdivision plot that's in your, in your plan sets with just some of the various lines labeled on the drawing. This is a four-acre property located at the intersection of Royce Field and Vincent's Lane. The zoning is a, is a two-acre zone in the I-two district. The orange boundary is the perimeter of the property. The green lines inside of that are the setbacks under the proposed subdivision, and the, the pink highlighted line is the, the limits of the existing building. As you can see, the, the property is essentially only about half utilized. All the parking is located to the, to the west and to the south, and the building is kinda located just west of center on the property with a small gravel area located to the north. To the north of the property is a railroad track. To the east is Royce Field Road, to the south Vincent Lane, and to the, to the west is a somewhat undeveloped industrial property.
Could you address the comments contained in the letter from Mr. White, the township engineer?
Sure. I'll skip to comment two on the, on the letter and the general comments. Basically requests a right-of-way dedication along Vincent's Lane. What appears to me has happened is there was apparently a, a bulb of a road for a cul-de-sac that was approved as part of a much earlier subdivision, which was located to the west of where the current cul-de-sac is constructed. Because that lot to the west was not really developed, it looks like whenever this development came into place, that the cul-de-sac was stopped at the property. We have no objection to dedicating some right-of-way, however we request it do in easement. The thinking behind that is if the lot to the back ever develops, it's likely that they would correctly extend the bulb to the back of the property, at which point we would assume that the, some of the impervious and the cul-de-sac that exist now would go away. So we prefer not to dedicate it in deed, because if it goes away, then we've just lost some of our acreage, and it would no longer be utilized. But I think that would hopefully solve the problem.
Mr. White?
So, may I check this first in? My first question, Mr. Chairman, I don't necessarily see a problem. I think we're gonna have to look at it, once we take the look at the paperwork, whether or not we're gonna do it in that form or by deed.
Okay.
Item three is just, I'm not objecting to our waiver for an environmental impact statement. Item number four is requesting a meets and bounds description to be provided for a cross-access easement. What we have proposed, basically, we have two entry drives on the property, one in the southwestern corner, one kind of directly in the center of the western side. We would propose to leave both entrances and make them the accesses between the two properties, and, and give lot eleven point oh one to the, to the west a right of continued access over that driveway. So we've defined that, and we've come down, and we certainly provide a description. And finally, we will certainly, now that we have the application number, we'll gladly revise the plans to include that on there. Regarding our outside agency approvals, we have received County of Somerset approval. We have been before the Environmental Commission, and I believe you probably have their comments in front of you, and we have made applications to fire officials, however, we have not received any comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Can you now address the comments contained in the letter from David Maskey, the township engineer, including but not limited to...
Planner.
The engineer?
I'm sorry.
Planning director.
Director of planning, including but not limited to why this variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance.
Sure. And I first believe that the, all the variances outlined in the letter are a hundred percent correct. The first item that was requested to be looked at was how we would explain the fifty-one percent lot coverage shown in our bulk table for the proposed lot. One of the variances that we're requesting here is a lot coverage variance. The current property as a whole has about thirty-six percent lot coverage, you know, roughly only sixty percent of what's allowed in the zone, so again, you know, significant, significant room for additional development. With the subdivision, as we proposed it, the, the developed lot would be at sixty-seven percent. One of the Environmental Commission's concerns was the excess of coverage. So what we're suggesting as a way to remedy that is to create it such that there's a deed restriction, as was suggested in the Environmental Commission's letter, that would essentially make sure that the two lots, when looked at as one, would always be at sixty percent, since they're already sharing a driveway. We see that as a, as a way to make sure that, you know, when you look at the property, it doesn't seem overly intense with development, that, you know, overall, it would still meet your requirement of sixty percent. So fifty-one percent is the remaining coverage that could be allowed on lot eleven point oh four, if you have the sixty-seven percent coverage on eleven point oh one.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, we, we supported the project. It's a, it's a good recycling facility and all that. The thing that we just didn't understand in terms of this averaging two lots to get impervious coverage equal, you know, for both, it's just never been done, so we just, we don't know. I think we need some, some assistance from planners or the consultants to kinda say, does this be done or not be done?
Well, that's what I should say, ask Eric, what's, what's the, you know, legality of this?
Well, I think the resolution, and probably the deeds as well, are going to have to clearly designate to anyone who subsequently owns the property, whether it is the, a common owner or there's an attempt to, because they're in for a subdivision, to sell the other property to a subsequent owner, that there are limitations upon which that second lot can be developed. And the second piece is the existing lot cannot be developed any further than it already is developed. And I'm assuming it's gonna, it should be a condition within any and all contracts and deeds, and it will be a condition of the resolution or approval.
Yeah, it's a good point, because we don't know the future, so we don't...
I mean, we've never, I mean, as far as I've been on the board, I've never occurred to anything like this.
No. And we haven't, we hadn't never seen anything like that on the Environmental Commission, so that was our, just to clarify, that was our point.
And David, your thoughts? David?
Yeah, I understa...
Sorry, I didn't know if you were... I can't see this, I can't...
Yeah, I, I think there's some logic to, to what the proposal is. In other words, you'll have two lots, the maximum on either one is sixty percent. They're taking, balancing off the, the overage of seven percent on the interior lot by reducing through, through an agreement contractually, that they would not exceed fifty-one percent. So, yeah, on average, each lot would, the total of the two lots would not exceed the impervious surface. I might add, when, when we had a, kind of a pre-concept meeting some time ago with the applicant, there was some suggestions that they do whatever they can to mitigate the impervious overage. And of course, that's being created not by additional construction, but because the lot is so large now, and you're taking away basically the, the vacant part of the, of the property. So it ups automatically the impervious coverage on the interior lot. So the, the request was, or suggestion was, that they do whatever they can to mitigate the, the, the need for a variance on the interior lot, and I'm imagining this is part of that mitigation effort?
Yes. Some other things that we looked at, you know, for instance, the, the driveway to the south is overly wide as constructed, but when we look at, you know, the effects of trying to save a percent and a half of impervious surface and having to rip out, you know, three hundred foot curb for the sake of just reducing a foot or so of pavement, you know, we didn't really think it's the best expenditure of resources. It's, it's disruptive for the sake of being disruptive, so we thought this was a better way to make sure that the lot wasn't overly developed, rather than, you know, deconstruct portions of the site just to put them back together.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Mr. Singer, is your client here?
Yes.
Can we have him come up for a moment?
Sure.
Yeah, we swear him in.
Raise your hand, sir. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. State your full name, spelling your last name?
Todd. Last name is McGee, M-A-G-E-E.
Thank you.
Mr. McGee, and obviously, I would suggest you rely on Mr. Singer to tell you whether or not to answer my questions. You've understood that the proposal here will restrict the development on both lots now and going forward, and that you understand that if you would either sell the lots or try to develop the lots, that there are restrictions on the impervious coverage for both lots in order to meet the requirements?
Yes.
And you agree to such?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up comment. The rear of the, the area behind the existing building, you show it, the gravel drive, but there's no true delineation on how much, and gravel is considered impervious, by the way. Because you are requesting a variance for exceeding impervious coverage, if the board chooses to approve this, we would want to, we would like to see you put more detail on the final plan, the compliance plan, that outlines exactly where that gravel goes to. So we know it's not being extended at some point, and that your calculations are indeed correct in terms of, I don't know if you included that entire back area is impervious, or some of it, or... So we'd need a little more detail, so we have on paper, what is the extent of that gravel area, and that it does indeed fall within that sixty-seven percent?
Yes, and, and as, as delineated on the plan, that was the limits of the main portion of gravel, as best we could locate it. That was absolutely included in our calculation, and we would limit ourselves to that area, no further expansion.
When you say that area, I don't see on the plan...
We do have two lines, one basically is just short of the property line to the north, and then it kind of...
The dashed line?
Yes, and then it comes to the, the pavement area, the park.
Okay, on the final plan, I'd appreciate if you'd label it as such?
Sure.
The extent of gravel area?
Of course.
Thank you.
What is the use of the gravel driveway, as, right now?
Storage and vehicular access.
There were two, I think, two trailer trucks parked back there when I was, did a site visit. Are they always there, or in and out, or loading, or what?
Yes, we, we parked some of our pump trucks over on that, that area, the gravel area? Yes, that area. So it's, it is used to park trucks.
David, is there a, in the orient, if you, if they put some sort of paver that has grass in it, that they could park heavy trucks in, would that reduce the impervious surface number?
I don't know how we consider a grasscrete or some type of, I don't know offhand how much that would reduce by. There is porous pavement, are there, are there alternatives? Bill could speak to this maybe, in terms of, I mean, gravel is considered impervious because it gets compacted, and it becomes like concrete. Bill, is there some alternative?
The grass pavers, there is a certain percentage open.
Which allows for...
Impervious pavement and impervious concrete, they haven't really come up with a way to really tell you how to account for that, so it would be...
Grass pavers would be something that'd be a possibility, that'd give you some impervious surface relief?
I think it's, yeah, it's probably about sixty percent impervious, forty percent pervious, more or less, depending on the paper.
We've allowed pervious pavers also.
Yeah.
You know...
And something, if you don't know what that is, it's, it's a new technology that has come out, that they use a lot in emergency right-aways for fire trucks, that doesn't look ugly, because grass grows through it, and they cut it, so it doesn't, but it's something that you can actually park heavy vehicles on, and that would, that would reduce your impervious coverage?
We do have other mitigating factors that Mr. Ingram will...
Okay.
Things that we're gonna do, that we're proposing to do, that would reduce the impervious. The parking spaces. No, the share cubes.
You know, one thing we did note, and was noted, it was, it's actually the next comment in the, in the planner's letter.
Okay.
Says that we have a forty-five stall required and provided. We do show forty-five stalls being provided, but I think our calculation that we were trying to show, if you look at page one in the lower left-hand corner, all the way to the left of the parking schedule calculates based on the areas of the building, actually a total of thirty-nine stalls being required. Forty-five is shown as the existing and proposed. So realistically, we were proposing to locate three stalls on the new lot to be created, could leave us with forty-two, still a three-stall excess of where, what we need, and we think between the cross-access, three of those stalls are really, could be associated to the, to the other property. And again, that was, we saw that as kind of another mitigated measure, as, you know, if we could use three less parking stalls, we'd meet that requirement. So that would be approximately six hundred square feet of impervious right there.
You're saying you're reducing the existing number of parking spaces by three?
We wouldn't be reducing it, but three stalls that would otherwise be required for the other lot could be provided through cross-access to the other lot and just remain on our property. I mean, if we had to remove them from this property and put them on the other, we could do that also, but again, to avoid destruction of resources, we were hoping to just let them remain.
How does that work if someone else owns the property?
I'm not sure I follow...
Yeah, have somebody else's partner?
What you're explaining.
Does your plan show you building three new spaces on the other property?
No. Due to the subdivision, those three stalls would just inevitably be on the other property, so we're...
You're subdividing off three existing spaces, basically?
Right, but we still have an overage of three spaces on our property.
But you're not reducing them?
No, we could either reduce them, or if we were to credit them to the other property, again, it really would be, it's three less stalls that they're therefore required to have on their lot.
But the, but the pervious is still there, correct?
Correct. And again, that just gets back to our point, that if it's shared, because they're sharing access, and they're able to share some parking, it, in our mind, it just made more sense to just, because they're sharing that, you know, there's a dry aisle that's shared, all that area, whether it's on one lot or the other, it's not really any more than would otherwise be allowed on an overall, you know, we left this property as a four-acre lot, and put another building up on it and more parking, it's at sixty, it would be at sixty percent impervious, and the only difference here is an imaginary property line that you only see on paper, and the four acres still remains at sixty percent impervious.
So those three spaces, then, would still be counted in to that fifty-one percent that you're capped at?
That as well, if...
Oh, would have to be.
That would help. We could reduce that fifty-one percent, another percent and a half to account for those three stalls.
Who's gonna use those three stalls?
Again, if they're located...
The existing owner or tenants, or the, or whoever buys the new lot?
They could be used by either one. We assume that by cross-access, as long as the two lots had the appropriate parking, they could share handicap stalls, everything like that, and that would minimize what was required.
Well, all right. It depends on where the, when you get to the handicap, as you know, it has to do where they're located. You don't know where the new building's gonna be, so to say these, that they would be sharing handicap... Those are site plan questions for the new lot, that we can't really answer or address right now.
So that, I guess that takes us to item four of the, of your planner's letter, comment four point one.
Well, 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 let's back up to the parking.
Okay.
There are eight spaces in the back northwest corner.
Yes.
I was there, there were at least forty dumpsters stacked on top of those spaces. In other words, they're not available for parking, besides the fact that you've got all these dumpsters stacked outside. Can you explain what's going on there?
The applicant has not needed them, even through the parking calculation, it has not been a problem. However, he would agree to remove them from that area and not store them there, store them on the gravel instead, so that they could remain open.
Well, not needing them, and just sort of unilaterally filling them with dumpsters is not exactly...
Not the correct thing to do.
The way to go, the way to go.
And we would agree not to do that.
Are they still there?
I was not aware that was an issue, but I can have those forklifted out ASAP.
Do you have approval for outside storage? And just so the board knows, I did a site visit, and those eight spaces in the back, there were literally, I counted them, about thirty to forty, I don't know if dumpsters is the right word or not? Stacked about three high, on the pavement and on the grass. So it's outside storage, I'm not sure if it's been authorized as outside storage, plus you're covering, we're talking about impervious coverage, you have these dumpsters piled up on the grass.
What are the use of, potentially, what are you using them for?
Fair enough. You know, I, I guess from just a, you know, theoretical standpoint, we have a big fence, and there, it's, no one from the street can see it, so I did, it didn't seem to be an issue. We didn't even think it would be any kind of an issue. But we, we use those dumpsters to collect the waste cooking well, and we put them in the back restaurants. And so we had an excess amount inside, and so we stored them outside in the back, sort of corner of the property.
And what, the oil that's in these dumpsters are gonna be used later, or is that, or is that a waste?
Absolutely. No, they're...
That's, that's the ingredients that you're using, that you're storing?
Correct. Yes, they're refurbished, once an account would cancel, or they go out of business at a restaurant, then we would have to remove the, the container, and then bring it back, you know, repaint it again, and then put it back out in the field.
Are they empty, or full?
They're, they're all empty.
They're all empty?
They're all empty. Yes, sir.
Well, I guess, I guess the, one of the points is, if, if those spaces are not available, then you'd have to, you may be looking at a parking variance, because you don't have enough parking anymore.
We can get those taken, we can get that taken care of ASAP for you.
Thank you.
Anything else, David, on that issue?
Not on that issue, no.
So regarding the four point one, which is the, the proposed screening, we did propose some additional trees, five trees to be planted, along this proposed subdivision line to the north end of the site, basically where the building has the, kind of the leg of the L, coming closer to Royce Field Road. Again, we were just proposing that, basically to fill in some gaps where there weren't existing trees in the, in the row, to basically screen the fact that the building was going to be, proposed to be closer than would be permitted to the, to the side property line, and also to screen the, the gravel area at the back of the property. We can certainly provide details on the, the installation of those trees on the plan. And finally, item four point two, just discusses the, a proposed sign easement. It is one of the variances we are requesting here, I think it was one, I guess we didn't note initially, but... So there is an existing sign located close to Royce Field Road. It's, it's pretty much all the way to the front, and the building is all the way to the back. Our proposal would be that if the lot is subdivided, to allow both lots to still use the existing sign location that's there, and not install a second sign on lot eleven point oh one. You know, really, the, the sign is there to be an indicator to, to vehicles that are looking for the facility, where the property is. We are not proposing, and would not want to be accessing off of Royce Field, access to both lots would still be off of Vincent's Lane. So we believe that having the sign remain in its current location at the intersection would be the proper location to keep vehicles to turn into Vincent's Lane, rather than take them off the sign and put a sign out front on Vincent's Lane, where it wouldn't have the visibility that would allow people to, to know to come to the property. So that is, that is our request.
So you are requesting a variance?
Yes, sir.
For, as for having a sign off premises?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, we would agree not to have a freestanding sign on the property so that there's not an additional sign.
So one sign?
Correct.
Directional sign.
And I believe that is all for the, the planning comments. But really, to get to the heart of matter of the variances we're requesting, I know it is a little bit of a lengthy list. I'd like to just go through them though and try and explain our rationale for coming up with a plan as we have. It's, it's our belief that in, in an ideal world where we didn't have a building on it, a lot of these variances would go away. Really, it's, we have an existing building, it's there, it's functioning, it's in good shape. So, you know, we tried to minimize the variances to the maximum extent possible. If, you know, if we didn't have that there, we could create a much more conforming plan, but we think the layout we proposed really does no detriment to any of the neighboring properties, and the plan we presented represents good planning. The first variance is a point oh six acre lot deficit in acreage for the proposed lot eleven point oh four. Again, we do have four acres. We could create theoretically two, two acre lots, really a de minimis reduction, in my opinion, of point oh six acres to accommodate in a reasonable fashion the existing building as it exists. You know, again, we could deconstruct a portion of the building, get ourselves to two acres, you know, increase some setbacks, but it would be somewhat of a wasteful destruction of the existing building. We also note that there are a couple lots across the street in the I two zone as well that are more deficient in the area than we show here. We believe if you look at that property, the vacant lot clearly has adequate space, basically similar to the, to the existing lot in terms of buildable area within the setbacks in order to function. And also the fact that we're sharing an access and some parking allows us to, you know, work with that slight reduction to no detriment. Additionally, we are requesting a C two variance for lot width on both lots. We have the unique scenario here of fronting on two streets. The existing lot doesn't suffer from this deficit because it has about three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Roycefield and over five on Vincent's Lane. Under the proposal, the new lot would have the same frontage along Roycefield, and we basically tried to split the frontage on Vincent's Lane to about two hundred and forty and two hundred and fifty feet each. Again, there, there are ways that we could, you know, if we were just, just not to have this building here and subdivide along the division line, we could create it so two lots, we had two acres, and basically we'd create very odd-shaped lots. We, we believe that the imaginary lot line that exists on paper, really, we have sufficient lot width, and again, the shared access helps mitigate any negative impacts that a deficient width might have by providing joint access to the two properties. Again, clearly, we have more than adequate buildable area on the lots. We have variance for front yard setback on the existing building. That's actually an existing condition, which we're not worsening in any way. The, the existing building is at seventy-four point six feet, or five feet, I believe. Appears to just be a, an error in construction whenever this building was built, because when I reviewed the tenant's files, it didn't indicate that there was any variance requested for that. So it just appears that the building was built slightly short of where it should have been. I would again argue that it's somewhat of a de minimis exception. It's, it's been there, you know, for many years. Nobody's noticed any negative impacts for that half foot. We don't believe that there's any detriment to letting that remain. And again, not something that's affected in any way by the subdivision. We are requesting a rear yard setback for the existing building. One thing you'll notice is the proposed lot, the setback line goes substantially further to the north, and that is by virtue of the fact that that is a corner lot and does not have a rear, it has two side yards. That's what this building was constructed under originally. So even though the building hasn't gotten any closer to that line, it now shows up as a variance because it's now a rear yard instead of a side. We submit that because that's a railroad property to the north and the building itself hasn't changed in any way, if it was suitable before, it's just as suitable now. It's kind of an existing condition which we created regardless here, and any demolition of that, we really see, you know, could create a conforming setback would really be a more of a negative impact than a positive one. The same situation really for the side yard setback. What our proposal here was basically, again, normalize the, the lots, keep them as close as possible to the, to the two acre minimum. We proposed to do a twenty-five foot setback to the existing building, still maintaining the fifty feet on the proposed lot. Again, we think because we control this property, if the other lot is sold, it's, it's not affecting anyone other than the lot that we'd be selling. So, you know, it, it can't have really a negative detrimental impact in that scenario. One advantage we see to the subdivision is that by separating the lots, we're really able to break up the mass of what could otherwise be built here. So having a subdivision line that somewhat breaks the lots apart, keeps the buildings to a more manageable size, I think aesthetically creates a more attractive property than, you know, we were just to essentially double the size and have a massive building out there. We think that that, you know, breaking that up in that fashion actually serves some purposes of zoning, which I'll get into in a second. I think we've discussed the impervious coverage variance, and our proposal to create the deed restriction, we believe mitigates the, the excess coverage in that scenario. I don't believe that there are really any negative impacts to any of these, these variances truly because the building exists as it does today, and none of the conditions which would otherwise affect any neighboring properties other than the one we're creating are really changed here in any fashion. Again, if we were just to construct more parking and a, and a larger building here, you know, nothing would really change about our situation other than an imaginary lot line. This is really just a scenario where our client wants to run his recycling business and doesn't want to be a landowner. And I think a lot of times, you get better maintenance and better care of properties when they're under control of, of a person who owns the property or who's in the, the business of owning and renting space to folks. So I think by letting the applicant focus on his business, he'll be able to better keep control of what property he owns, as well as who would ever develop that lot in the future. Just to touch on some purposes of zoning that we believe are further, we believe it's, the application would provide adequate light air and open space. As I mentioned, by splitting the lots, I think we're reducing the mass of a building that could otherwise be built, creating some passage of light and air between the buildings, and I think that furthers the aesthetics of the site and really breaks up the, the mass. Most of the properties in the I two zone are a lot closer to two acres than four, other than the property to the west and to the south. All the lots across the street are around two acres and some are less. All developed in a very similar fashion, so I believe that would be in keeping with the, with the neighborhood. Also, we think that this design also promotes purpose H encouraging location design of transportation routes that avoid traffic congestion by the virtue of the fact that we'll be maintaining the two accesses on Vincent's Lane, proposing no new accesses or access onto Roycefield, which would be the, the busier street. We also believe this will promote a desirable visual environment. Again, we are, we're proposing minimal upgrades in landscaping, but obviously, the existing open space lot has very little, it's just open space. Any future subdivision or site plan application, excuse me, would obviously include additional landscaping. And again, we think that breaking up that building does serve for a more desirable visual environment. Also, we believe we're conserving resources. You know, any destruction of the building or the, you know, to deconstruct a curb for the sake of reducing impervious, things like that would only serve to, to waste resources, to demolish and reconstruct. We believe this proposal, you know, while creating some variances, really is having no negative impacts, and that, you know, allowing things to remain as they've been without incident would be in the best interest of, of zoning. So I don't believe there's any major impairments of the, of your zoning plan or ordinance, and we think the variances can be granted based on these reasons.
Mr. Ingram?
That concludes Mr. Ingram's testimony. Any questions from the board?
Anything from, anything from the board, questions?
Yeah, I did, just, I wanted to try and be clear about the, the amount, the size of the building that could be built on lot eleven oh four. It seems like those calculations were made by sort of reverse engineering the amount of impervious space, coverage. So you had fifty-one percent, and you maximize that out. That requires variances. Okay? It is possible for you to reduce that size and eliminate some of the variances, a setback.
Reduce, reduce the built, the existing.
Right, potentially. I'm just hypothetically, you could reduce the size, the developable, developable area of lot eleven oh four and eliminate some of the variances that you're asking for on that lot.
By doing, I'm sorry, by doing, what's that?
You're, you're asking for setback variances on eleven oh four also.
We're not asking for any setback variances on eleven oh four.
No, I thought, I don't know, I was looking at the list. Okay, maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, two, two forty instead of three hundred on the back, isn't, wasn't it?
Oh, that's lot width. And again, we have lot width on Roycefield for that lot.
Okay, that's lot width, okay. So, that's why I'm trying to get it clear. So there are no variances needed for the size of the developable area of eleven oh four?
No, sir. The, the setbacks that we show in green for that lot are the zoning requirements that would normally be required. So that, as you can see, that buildable area, differently shaped, but practically the same as the lot next door.
Okay.
That's already developed.
And that works out to fifty-one percent?
Right. So because we're sixty-seven percent on the one, we would have to be fifty-one percent on the other to, to keep a balanced average of sixty. And, you know, we've obviously done some calculations on how big of a building that could be built there. It's more than sizable enough to, to function and be a viable property.
So what's being balanced really is the size of that lot?
Correct.
Which affects the variances then on the other lot, eleven oh one. If that lot were smaller, and if the developable space were smaller, then you wouldn't need the variances on the other lot, but then you're coming short of the, farther away from the two acres that you need on that lot.
Exactly. We really tried to balance everything, you know. Essentially, if we had a vacant piece of land, we could find a way to be conforming. It wouldn't be pretty, but it would be conforming. So we're really just trying to deal with the fact that we have existing.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm pointing out is that we have to make a decision on which of the variances are more important.
Sure.
Here.
Understood.
The, the space, you know, the area of lot eleven oh four versus setback variances. That's all.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. White, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman. I didn't see anything in here about a report of any wetlands, or you're certifying there are no wetlands on these properties?
We are certifying that nothing, no wetlands will be affected by this project. There is a potential wetland area which has been mapped by DEP, well off property to the west. If we, nothing is within proximity to anything that would be built. If there's any wetlands, it would only affect eleven point oh one, which is already built out. So we're not, we, there's no possible way we can do any disturbance within two hundred and fifty feet of that, simply because that lot's already developed. So there's, there's no possible way that anything proposed on eleven oh four would affect wetlands. That we, we certainly certify.
But, but you know, our regulations are, if there's any wetlands on there that, you know, deducts from the amount of properties total there.
Yes, and I don't believe that any of that would affect eleven point oh one either. I, I don't, first of all, I would not imagine. It was, it shows up as an isolated wetland, so it wouldn't really have a hundred and fifty foot buffer. It was just a patch well deep into the, into the lot to the west.
I, I asked because I saw no, no report here.
Sure. And we did, we did investigate that. We walked around the property. There's no, there's no wetlands along the, you know, like a ditch or anything along the railroad tracks or anything of that nature. Just one potential area that showed up on DEP's maps, which we don't believe affect either lot.
There's nothing specifically on your lots?
No, not at all. It's, basically, the, the only unoccupied area is just a high dry level grass area.
It appears to me that the crux of the, of the sticky part of this is the shared parking easement, and I, I don't know, is that something we can actually just approve based on not really having any lines drawn up or anything hard, or, or future sales or anything that, that we just wouldn't be able to grant that?
Board could refuse to grant the cross-access easement, or the concept of a cross-access easement, and let the developer of the, of the subdivi, subdivided property come to you with the concept at the time of the application for the subdivided property. And I think frankly, that may be the way to go. There are forty-five parking spaces currently on the existing lot, and if they want to address the parking issue with those spaces on the subdivided lot, then they should, then the owner, whether it's this owner or a subsequent owner, should come in at the time of the application with a cross-access easement.
Can I just add, how many of those parking spaces do you actually use?
I would say about half of them.
Okay.
Yep, out of the forty-five.
Thank you.
How many employees, just roughly?
Off the top of my head, it's, there, there's, there's six or seven off-site, so there's probably only twelve.
Coming in every day, coming to your location every day?
Over thirteen, something like that.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion for this application?
Motion for the open to the public.
I'm sorry, I apologize, jumped in. Motion to open to the public.
So.
Second.
Second. Anyone in the public like to question?
I'd just reply, Mr. Chairman, not only to the engineer, but to the applicant.
To the, yes. To all those who have testified. Right? Seeing none. Motion to close public?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to the matter at hand. Any comments from the board, thoughts?
I think we ought to go with Mr. Bernstein's recommendation that those parking spaces are not included in this application, they go to the other lot.
So you would not grant the cross-access easement at this time?
Correct.
Other than that, everything else, all the other variances as, as stated, and the cleanup of the dumpsters in the parking area be removed?
And, and the deed restrictions as, as agreed to?
The conditions as to the impervious coverage, the, since it really was not before the board per se, that it will not approve a cross-access easement at this time, and that the applicant will provide to the board prior to the resolution memorialization a letter in which, that the dumpsters that Mr. Maskey referred to have been removed from the site, and therefore allowing for the impervious coverage to maintain as it currently exists.
And we wanted a better delineation of that gravel area?
Yes.
Correct. On the plan.
And all the conditions, etc., set forth in the various reports.
Obviously overseen by.
Was it my recollection, Mr. Singer, that your client, that the engineer testified that we have not yet heard from Mr. Winiger?
Correct. We followed up again today. I don't, we were told he wasn't in.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, I don't recall in the fifteen years I've been here that we have been without Mr. Winiger's report before board. You can contingent, condition it upon Mr. Winiger's approval, but the applicant should be aware that if Mr. Winiger comes back and wants changes, you're gonna have to come back before an appro, before the resolution is approved.
Okay, by you?
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, got that. So, to, to reiterate, we have a motion to approve the variances with the exception of the cross-access easement. We are going to be pending on the approval of the fire marshal. We are going to move the dumpsters from the parking lot, and we're going to get a better delineation of the gravel area. Was there anything else? Is that it? I think that was it. So we have a motion.
Deed.
And a deed. And a deed.
And it was one of the, they were going to provide, from Mr. White's office, details on the types of trees that are going to be planted.
Details. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we, I don't think we have a motion.
Yeah.
I made a motion.
May I make a motion?
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, Lucille?
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conard?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sirocky?
Yes.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman LaPapa?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, for the new board members, the rest of the board is aware, um, it is the process of my office that a resolution memorialization is drafted. Once Ms. Grzinski provides us with the transcript, it is then reviewed by Mr. Maskey after we've done it, sometimes Mr. White, depending on the situation. It would then be sent to Mr. Singer for his clients, and the resolution will not come before this board until all parties have basically agreed to it, and it's a clean resolution.
As it should be.
So hopefully, the issues that we've raised, that the applicant needs to resolve, will be resolved prior to the resolution coming to you, but we'll leave that to ultimately, unfortunately, Mr. Winiger.
Yeah, we were actually told that we should hopefully hear from him tomorrow, so.
I would be the squeaky wheel. Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a correspondence in your packets, the two thousand fifteen Board of Adjustment Annual Report, approved January sixth of sixteen, and the Somerset County Planning Board Public Comment Deadline Proposal, New WQMP Rules Are Extended. With that, I have nothing else, would entertain a motion adjournment?
No.
No, I'm sorry?
We have two meet, you have two meetings scheduled, Mr. Chairman, for the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and the board members, especially the new ones, I'm sure will be thrilled to find out that there is nothing on the agenda for the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and therefore a motion at this time to cancel.
I believe those meetings to be canceled.
So we have, we have a motion to, to terminate or to cancel the January fourteenth and January twenty-eighth meetings. Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conard?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sirocky?
Of course.
Mayor Delcor? Chairman LaPapa?
If you say so.
Need you.
The next meeting, Mr. Chairman, would therefore be February first, weather permitting, fourth, pardon me, February fourth, weather permitting.
Very good, February first?
Fourth, you said?
Fourth.
February fourth. As I am.
At seven thirty. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.